Is there a concerted effort by our government officials to suppress free speech? Is there a covert contract awarding process that's hidden from public view? And are there some questionable hiring practices going on within our city government? All this and more on today's Community Chat with Ricky. Hi, I'm Ricky Neer. And today we talked to fifth generation businessman David Loeb. He is former city council member and former chair of the Downtown Management Association. He is a Delmar Regent. Thank you for joining us today. Let's get to it. Thank you for coming on the show.
Thank you for having me.
You're welcome. First of all, I'd like to know a little bit more about you and your background before we kind of talk about our topic today.
Sure. So I grew up here, fifth generation, and went to Ray High School, went off to college in upstate New York, came back after and went to work in my family's commercial real estate business. And over the years gradually bought that business and served in a variety of government roles. Started out when I was young on Board of Adjustment and volunteering at Downtown Management District. Eventually became Chair of Downtown Management District and was appointed to Planning Commission. And then I served two terms on City Council, had kids, took a little time off while they were babies. And then when they were both in elementary school, I, two years ago, I ran for and won a seat on the Delmar Board.
This podcast brought to you by Community Kitchen, a breakfast and lunch restaurant with a social mission located at 900 South Shoreline Boulevard inside First United Methodist Church. So you've been on City Council.
I have.
And so your time, what years would you say that that was?
I think like 10 to 10 or 11 to 13, 14, I think. Yeah. So I think I ran in '09, lost, and then ran again in '11. And then that was when we switched from odd to even, or yeah, odd years to even years. And so it was two terms, but not four years total. So, yeah.
How would you say that your time during, on City Council during that time is compared to how City Council is today?
I would say there was less factionalism when I was on Council. I know that when I first got on Council, the, one of the big questions had been they had actually eliminated general public comment in the Council before me. And that had been a split five-four vote. And then I had wanted them to bring it back. And so when I got elected, we voted during our rule setting on switching it back. And there were five of us that switched it back. And so we were kind of who instituted the system we have today.
So at some point, there wasn't, not even public comment allowed at the City Council meetings?
So, well, general public comment. So state law has that certain public hearing items, certain, certain things that the Council votes on have to have a public hearing and you have to allow public comment for that. And so what is not required under state law is to have a period of time where anybody can talk about any issue. That is a voluntary action under state law by a board to institute or not.
So with all the controversy right now going on with public comment, what do you think is causing the issues with, with people being upset about what's happening?
Well, I mean, I think there's, I think there's room to disagree on some of the things the city's doing. I think one of the issues is, is that a lot of public comment has become political in nature rather than policy in nature. And you know, council meetings are really when you're supposed to discuss policy and vote on policy and move forward rather than have it be a political event. Because if it's a political event, then nothing happens and nothing changes.
So is there, is there a more appropriate place for people to be able, is there like a town hall or something for people to be able to have this type of discussion and be heard?
Well, you know, in, in education, they call it, there's a concept called shared governance, where, you know, the, the governing body board meeting is the final stage of a discussion, not the only stage and not the first stage. And so, you know, for instance, at college, there's student government, there's faculty governance, there's systems where if a policy is going to change, it goes around to the different groups of people who are able to make suggestions or, you know, changes to that policy before it goes to the governing body to vote. And that's intended to kind of get everybody on board. And I think one of the things that happened in COVID for not just government, but business organizations, civic organizations, you know, nonprofits, is everybody went back to their respective corners. You know, they, they stayed at home, they isolated themselves. And so a lot of these systems of governance fell away and were just replaced with whoever's at the top making a decision, you know. And so I think that people using public comment to try to influence decisions is almost too little, too late, you know. And what they, what they really should be advocating for is how do we have, how do we have systems of discussion that precede that board meeting where differing opinions can be brought up and either explained? Because, you know, I've seen ones where, you know, somebody asks for something that's not legal. And so public comment doesn't allow the staff or the Council to have a discussion with you. It is a, it is a one-way street in terms of information flow. And so people can, can say something, walk out of there being dejected, not knowing that, hey, that's a great idea, but state doesn't, state or federal law doesn't allow us to do that. And so I, I think I would be more of an advocate for rebuilding those systems of, of people being able to give input through, you know, ad hoc committees, through advisory, city advisory committees. And you know, even the city advisory committees, for instance, who've, in a lot of ways, they've become politicized. You know, the library board, you know, I always took the opinion that when I was appointed to a board, either on an ad hoc basis or, you know, official longstanding board, that our job was to listen to everybody and either have a, have a solution that everybody could agree with at least in some form, or at least define the, the choices that the Council had. You know, our job was not to deliver, was not to put our thumb down on the scale for one side or the other and move a controversy to Council. It was to try to resolve the issue and bring something to Council that everybody on Council could feel like they could say yes to. And I think we've lost that.
Yeah. So I guess most recent right now, I've seen two, kind of two, two situations on Facebook. The first one is the awarding of contracts. There's been, you know, someone that has presented information that they were concerned about and were physically removed from the discussion.
Yeah.
Tell us a little bit more about how something like that, a citizen can address something like that in such a way that it makes a difference?
Well, it's kind of an interesting question. You know, I, I know everybody involved in that personally. And, you know, I, I saw the comment that led to the removal. I don't think it was grounds for removal. You know, I think governments can go into defensive crouch where they, you know, think they can use rules of decorum to stifle somebody's speech. There's a lot of case law on that. It's pretty hard. You know, people can say a lot of things. On the other hand, people should be cognizant of what their goal is. You know, is your goal to be mean to them? Or is your goal to accomplish in, in a change in whatever the policy is? And what I've seen a lot now is that people are showing up and giving comment. And if their goal is to change whatever the issue is, it's having the exact opposite effect. Because it basically creates a defensive posture for the government where they feel like they're defending themselves rather than going, okay, you know, here's an opportunity for us to have some introspection and to change. And so I think that in that specific case, I didn't even think that he was off topic. You know, that was the original thing. And if, if the answer was, if it was, you're off topic because you're not supposed to, if you're speaking on a specific agenda item, you're supposed to speak to that agenda item. The, the chair's role, if somebody's going off topic, is to stop the topic, not to throw somebody out of the room. Because, you know, even if you're not allowed to talk, you do have a right to be there and witness it as long as you're not being disruptive. Now, there was a case, that was at the school board, there was a case at the city where people were absolutely being disruptive. You know, it was not their turn to speak, they were not recognized, they kept standing up, making noises, they did it organized in tandem on purpose, and they got thrown out of the room and they should have. And that's, that, that wasn't an acceptable thing to do. And I don't know why they thought that that was going to help them at all.
Right.
You know? I mean, that's what I would tell people is, you know, and I've gone and I've said some not-nice things in terms of what I thought they were doing, but I always try to think about, how can I say this in a way where they might actually be in a position to listen to it and take it to heart and change the behavior rather than just saying it to make them look bad?
So is there any time, I mean, I'm kind of asking you questions like, tell me like I'm five.
Okay.
So is there, you know, times where, I mean, we want it, we want, we take our time to go there and say our piece for effective change? So if, if a citizen goes and addresses the City Council and says, hey, you know, I have an issue with XYZ. And the City Council says, okay, that's a, you know, a great idea or a great, you know, insight. Do they come back with some type of report or say, this is what we got out of the meeting and here's some things that we're going to address based upon your grievances or your concerns?
I don't know if they do it on that scale. I mean, I, I can tell you, you know, one of my great examples of a public comment success story is when I was on Council, a lady came in and said, you know, I'd really like to keep chickens in my backyard, but I'm not allowed to. And I didn't know that, I don't know that you all are aware of that, but that would be something that I'd really like to do. And, you know, I looked into it and it was kind of basically, we had a all-encompassing animal livestock ordinance from, you know, the days when people would run sheep down the middle of the street and, you know, animal-borne diseases were, were a much bigger problem then than they are now. And so we crafted an ordinance to allow people to keep chickens, but not roosters because, you know, I'd had an experience in my childhood of a neighbor who had a bootleg rooster and, you know, the rooster woke everybody up in the neighborhood every morning. But, you know, and so we put in, we, we put together an ordinance and worked with her and passed it. And now that's an opportunity everybody has. So I mean, I think there are success stories and, and to me, that's what public comment should be about is, is people who have a genuine concern and an outlet for that. You know, town halls have been used in the past for a lot of that stuff because that format allows the staff to respond instantaneously if somebody has a specific question. And, you know, one of the, one of the complaints that I have heard kind of throughout the community is, and you'll even, you'll see it on some of the agenda item stuff, is, you know, staff will say, oh, well, we went and met with these people. And those people will stand up and they say, yeah, they met with us, but I didn't get to talk, you know, they listened to what we had to say, but what we had to say isn't really reflected in this and it wasn't explained to us why it's not. You know? And I think, I don't know that city staff can be the outlet to that. You know, I don't, I don't know that their job is to be people who listen to and incorporate public comment. It almost has to be, you know, it really has to be the elected leaders who are saying, okay, you know, my, my job is to be the interface between the community and the professional governing staff. And so they need to be out there, I think, listening to people and saying, this is valid, this is not valid. You know, this is ready to do something about, this is not ready to do something about, this is a, you know, this is a majority opinion that we support, this is a, you know, a, a small minority position that, you know, five people care about and is not worth our time to address at this point. You know, and that's, that's where policy becomes politics, is doing that air traffic control, deciding what gets worked on and what doesn't, and what's important on any given day. And I don't, I don't think you can, I don't think you can outsource that to a professional staff.
Okay. So my next question is, there has been some concern raised about some hiring practices. There's been some news lately about that. And is the City Council, is that where those, are those concerns should be addressed?
True. No, I, I think people should address them to Council.
Okay. And so when they address that, what do we hope to see change through that? Is that, is that something where they can communicate with the news about that?
Who, the advocates for making a change on that or the Council making a change on that?
I would say the Council.
Yeah. I mean, I, I would say we have seen less and less of elected leaders directly addressing issues that people care about in the news.
Okay.
And I'm not sure why that happens. I mean, I, I can guess on that one that they, you know, there's not really a great answer for them to give that I think would make people happy. And that's probably why we didn't see it. But I didn't, you know, I didn't see media trying to chase them down to get that answer.
I think my concern is that with, the way I'm seeing our, our community and some of our citizens getting really, really upset, I really feel like, they feel like they're not being heard.
Right.
And I just feel like there's, in order to maybe quell some of the situation that's around that, maybe there could be some proactive measures being taken so that people do feel like the Council and that our government and our elected officials are working on, on our behalf.
I, yeah. I mean, I, I think that would be smart politically for the Council to do. You know, and I, I'm, I guess part of my point was, is that if they aren't listening, you know, I think, and then the one you specifically said on the hiring practices. I didn't see the public comment that was given to them do anything to make them go, this is a problem that if I solve it, I, you know, it lumped everybody together. It didn't give anybody the room to go, you know what, you're right, we need to change this somehow, this is the change I want to do. It was, you know, and so that's why I kind of say it was, it was very political in nature, you know? And some of it was given by people who were political candidates. And so, you know, I, and I've, I've been a candidate, I've been an advocate. How you say, what you say lands differently based on their perception of what your interest is. You know, are you interested in not having that happen? Are you interested in getting rid of the person who did it? Or are you interested in getting rid of me by the fact that that person worked for me? And when it's the last one, it's all defense.
Yeah.
And so, you know, I watched that public comment and I was pretty sure nothing was going to happen. Because the public comment was not centered around, this is bad, it lowers the trust that the community has in the government, it lowers the capability of people to trust that the best people are doing the job. You need to address it for that reason because, you know, you all, you all have important things to do and it's important that the community trusts that when they give you money by voting on a bond package or when they elect you, that the best decisions are getting made rather than decisions are being made, you know, to benefit a couple specific people. And give them some room to make a decision. Now, that doesn't guarantee that they are, but then that's what elections are for. You know, but if, if it's constant, every meeting, an hour and a half of political attacks to start the meeting, then things don't get done. I don't think it makes the people who are giving the public comment look good. You know, I mean, at some point you become, okay, you're a sore loser. Because you come and complain about all this stuff, election time comes, you're still complaining about it, you lose. Okay, if you keep losing like that, does the community really care about what your viewpoint is? And the reality is, in a lot of cases, the community does care, but they go, okay, that person keeps, that person doesn't know how to be constructive. I don't, you know, I may trust their judgment, but I don't trust their capability of instituting that in a responsible way where, you know, the water still works in my house, the street gets paved, the police show up. Because I mean, if, if you go and actually talk to and listen to people, 95% of the public wants basic services to work. They want somebody to represent them that they think will listen to people and try to do the best job they can. And then the other 5% are split between people who are mentally ill and people who have a special interest. But the vast majority of people just want it to work and get their services.
Understood. So you made a comment and I, we had talked about this a little bit before the show. And it was kind of a long response. And so I don't remember everything that you said, but you made a comment, I think you said, it costs the City Council a certain amount of money per minute to be in session. Could you elaborate on that?
So the city has a $1.8 billion a year budget. They meet every week except the first Tuesday. So they have about 38, 40 meetings a year. If they are meeting on an average eight hours, which is a very long council meeting, then the amount of city budget per minute of, of City Council being in session is $100,000. So a three-minute public comment is $300,000. And so I point that out because a lot of times you'll see things and you're like, why is, you know, from my perspective, it's, okay, this is a giant organization. 3,500 people work there, has a huge budget. The Council has a job of setting policy and providing oversight of, of the staff. And so certain things, to me, are not important enough for the Council to spend any time on. You know, my reaction to the library controversy is that shouldn't be on the Council's radar. You know, and if they can't figure out a library policy amongst, you know, a diverse group of library board members, then, and it has to keep coming to Council for people to yell at the Council, maybe they need to get rid of the board and let the staff run the library. And if people want to donate books to the library, they can do that. And it's the staff's decision on whether and which books to take and put on the shelves or not. Because the library is an infinitesimally small part of what the city does every day. You know, they're spending hundreds of millions of dollars a year on infrastructure and things like that. And so, I mean, every minute you're spending on one thing is a minute you're not spending on something else. And so, you know, I care about the libraries, I want to be able to go and check out books at the library, but, you know, it should not be a constantly repeating event at City Council about what's going on in the library because there are other things that I think are more important.
There's a big divide with people saying they're trying to limit our, you know, our, our freedom of speech, they're trying to limit our public comment. You know, you've got one side that really wants to be able to express themselves and use that time, use that time to share their public comment.
True.
But then you've got the City Council saying, we're wasting so much time and so much money in the minutia of public comment. What would you think would be a good way to, to kind of start getting this absolved?
Well, I mean, I, I think from the, from the perspective of the Council, one of the problems is, you know, an eight-hour meeting's too long. This flat out is. I mean, you know, people can do four or five hours in a meeting. I mean, imagine how you feel at the end of work. Now imagine that at work you had a camera on you that was televised to the entire community the entire time you were at work. How mentally drained would you be at the end of that eight hours? You know, making sure that you didn't do anything that would be embarrassing to yourself or your family over an eight-hour period, every week. And so, and one of the other things is that they are voting on things, you know, there's 25, 30 agenda items at every City Council meeting. And on any number of those, there's professionals that the city pays an hourly rate to, who are outside professionals that are there to give a presentation or there to answer any questions that the Council or the community has. There's people from the community that are there because they're concerned about that specific issue. And so if you have public comment at the beginning and it's of an indeterminate length of time, you have no idea when those, you know, when those people are showing up, like, or when they, when they're up for their agenda item. So, you know, you can have somebody fly in for the day and you say, well, the council meeting starts at 11 or noon, but we don't know when you're going to go. And so, I mean, I've, I've seen it where, you know, it's like people were like, hey, my plane flight leaves in an hour. Like, I need to, you know, I need to get back home to pick up my kids. And so I think what the Council was looking for was a way to say, okay, public comments in this specific period of time, once that period of time is over, we're moving on to the regular agenda. Now, there's question of, I think the initial comment, the, the initial thing was, everybody can sign up for public comment and then we're going to compress everybody into that hour. So if there's more people than, you know, if there's more than 20 people, everybody gets less time. I don't necessarily think that's very fair because I, you know, I, I think to the people, you know, I think to the lady who wanted chickens. You know, okay, she showed up once, never saw her again after that in a council meeting. You know, she just wanted to give us an idea. Do we, you know, and the system now is it's first come, first served. So the people who want to be there every week to be on TV and get attention, they sign up at the very beginning. And so all the beginning time slots are theirs. So then somebody who's never been there before and doesn't know the game, they wait an hour if it's a ton of people, two and a half, three hours. Most people don't have two and a half, three hours to sit through a council meeting. And so the people who are there every week get to go. So my thought was, okay, if we're going to have everybody sign up beforehand, which didn't used to happen because we had a lot fewer people. And so it was like, okay, this is going to take 20, 30 minutes. You know, there'll be three or four people, maybe five, maybe six. Occasionally it takes an hour because, you know, there's some big thing and 20 people show up. But if it, so they have everybody sign up. So I was like, okay, well, how about you just do, whoever in the last six months hasn't spoken, they go first. Because then you're actually making sure that that person gets heard. Because whatever they're there for, they weren't, you know, they're not constantly outraged or constantly concerned. They have, they showed up for a reason. If it's the first time they've ever been there, if it's the first time they've been there in six months. So let those people go first and then let everybody go after them. And so if you're somebody who really cares and you go to every council meeting and you want to comment, fine, you're going at the end. And if they run out of time, have a time at the end of the meeting where you come back and those people can go. And if the meeting has run so long that you lose the Council because they're tired, they're wiped out, they can't, you know, they've got something else in their life going on where they have to go, then, okay, what you did is you lost somebody who, you know, somebody who speaks every council meeting didn't get to speak that week. Not the end of the world. I'm sorry.
I understand. So now I've also noticed that some people have resorted to, or not resorted to, some people will email as well. What is the protocol for timing? Do all emails require a response? Do all emails require a response? What is the turnaround time on something like an email for a city council?
Well, I mean, that, I would, I would put that as a problem on the council. So when I was on council, and so people understand, it's a 60 to 80 hour a week job that pays you about, you know, when you work it out, it pays about 12 cents an hour. Now, I mean, that doesn't mean I think council members should get paid more, you know, Delmar regions, we don't get paid anything. But people should understand that there's a lot of demands on their time. My schedule used to be that I would usually have a breakfast and lunch meeting of some sort every day. I'd do my regular job. I'd have two or three hours of city stuff during the day. I'd come home, I'd eat dinner with my wife. And then after dinner, we'd have the TV on and I'd be on my computer answering emails for an hour or two every night. And that was because one of my mentors, when I ran, said, you know, the most important thing you do is respond to people's emails and phone calls. And there would be, you know, half a dozen, dozen emails a week, one or two phone calls from, you know, general people. If there was something really, you know, hot going on, then it would be more. And so that, that was manageable to me. I have noticed, I usually communicate by email with the council. They are not good now at responding. And I don't know whether that's because they switched to a city-based email system and it bounces a lot of people's emails. I don't know if it's, they don't know that that's a good idea to do. You know, because I, I remember back when I was on council or, and before I was on council, you would email the council. And a good, you know, on any given issue, 60 to 70% of them would at least write back and say, hey, I got your email, I read it, thank you for reaching out. You know, because that, I think that can be a very discouraging thing for somebody if they send an email to all of them and nobody writes back. You know, the mayor has an auto reply that says, you know, thank you for reaching out. But yeah, I mean, I, I would say my advice to the council would be, read your emails. And you might have, and, and respond to people and you might have less angst at public comment because people might feel like you were listening and hearing from them other than them coming to the council meetings.
Is there, are there assistants? Are there anyone in, in the city council that helps? I know like, you know, like our congressman, they have people in the staff that help with phone calls and with emails. Does the city council have any staff like that?
So I think they've got, when I was on council, we did not. There, there was somebody, the mayor had somebody who's basically their full-time job because, I mean, my, my joke on the, I got, you know, a couple of phone calls a week was, nobody says, I'm mad, I'm calling the at-large, my at-large council member, they'd say, I'm mad, I'm calling the mayor's office. So, I mean, there, there was a gal in the mayor's office, and there still is, whose basic job is to, you know, take down phone messages from people who are upset about something, put them into the kind of call center pipeline and try to resolve that. My understanding is the council has two people who do that for them that they share, the eight other council members that can do work like that. When I was on council, there was a gal named Annie Leal who ran the call center who, you know, when you got on council, it was basically like, okay, you go and meet Annie and make friends with her. And when you get a call or email, you know, I, I remember I felt really powerful because my, my first week on council, I had a lady email me and she said, hey, you know, the trash man came by and they emptied my trash and then they put it back down, but the wind blew the top off. And then the wind caught the top and it blew over and I'm 75 and I can't pick up my trash can. And I got this email at 10:45 and I forwarded it to Annie and then went to a lunch meeting. And I came back at 1:00 and there was 15 people on the email chain and the, you know, the supervisor had already gone out and personally picked up this lady's trash can and rolled it back to her spot in her backyard. And I'm like, oh, wow, you know, I have power now. And so, I mean, I think there's, making sure those systems work is very important. Because like I said, 95% of people want their garbage picked up and want their water to work. And so I haven't heard a whole lot of that not working anymore. I think what is, what is, what, what the issue is now is that there are, there are some people who want specific policy changes that maybe, you know, that the council certainly doesn't agree with, and I would posit that most of the community doesn't agree with, that want to keep repeating that and act as if, you know, restrictions on them dominating a meeting is somehow an affront to everybody's free speech, which it isn't. It's just trying to make sure that they can not let one, any one issue dominate what that, what the government does. Because there is no one issue that can dominate what that government does. It's so big and it's so broad that there have to be multiple things that get talked about and voted on every meeting. And so if it all becomes about water, if it all becomes about libraries, if it all becomes about the city manager and who he hired or didn't hire, then it won't function.
Well, what would you say to, you know, a concerned citizen who has to address city council? And let's say they, they, they aren't feeling heard and they are making it a, a repeat, a repeat appearance because they really want to see a resolution. What would you suggest for them to do to somehow create effective change or to see some type of effective change?
It's a good question. I, I would say the most important thing is to not get personal. I would say that they need to ask for a format to talk about what the issue is and why whatever they're asking for won't be done or can't be done. You know, and honestly, public comment is the worst format. Because I mean, there's a state law that they can make a, a, a statement of fact in response. But the way that shakes out is it looks like a slap when you do it. You know, because you don't have the time to do it on every single person's, otherwise that's what the meeting is. And it, you can't have a conversation in the format. And so that's how I, I, I would do it. You know, I'd, I'd, I'd try to figure out a way to ask for an explanation in some format other than there and just say, hey, look, you know, I've, I've come and I, I've said this and I just want to understand what the process is for making, making this decision and why, you know, how are you going to explain to me why what I want isn't possible or isn't a good idea? And I'm not, I'm not doing that from the standpoint of, I think you're bad people or, you know, you're corrupt. I just want to understand what the decision-making process is and what are the other things that you're taking into account? Because I think what, you know, I, I mean, I saw it, I went to their listening sessions for the drought contingency plan. And I saw the, Drew Molly, who's the head of the water department, talked to some folks afterwards. And he gave some answers to some of their, to, to some of their questions, which they went, oh, okay, I understand that. Like, and, and I think, in a lot of cases, people just want to know that there's an answer. Like, you know, they're, they're not, they're not so wedded to their preconceived notion of what they want to do that they won't accept an answer. There are some people who are that way. And I think that maybe what, one of the city's problems is they think that too many people are that way rather than, you know, if, if you treat everybody as if they're genuinely concerned and that they are convincible, if there's a good reason why not, then the people who are not, who are not interested in an opposing point of view will reveal themselves pretty quickly. That's the advice I would give them is to try to act more like people are, you know, genuinely interested and to tell them why. So, yeah, that, that, that's the advice I would give. I mean, I, I think the, the hard political thing just makes them defend themselves. And I mean, and maybe that's the point, but I've never seen anybody do that and get themselves elected. You know, because I think everybody, everybody understands what that game is and nobody wants to put that responsibility, the responsibility to spend that much money and manage that many people in those sorts of people's hands.
So what options does the city council have now? Because I, I know from, from what I understand, and if, please correct me if I'm wrong, that there was some ideas from Austin that were brought, the, the 75-minute idea, you have 75 minutes, you know, divided up between how many, how many people show up. Is that kind of an option that's maybe across the board? Or are there some other options to also help city council?
I, I would, I would do something like that. And, but then I would, I would do the proviso that, you know, if, if it's apparent that a lot of people are coming on a lot of, on, on pretty much the same issue, then I would kick it to a workshop for the council to talk about if they think it's a quick one. If they think it's one that it's, we've got a lot of people with a lot of different opposing viewpoints and we need to, we need to get every, we, we don't feel comfortable making a decision on this until everybody can agree on what a good eye, good position is, then I think you take the leadership of that group of people, put them on an ad hoc committee, have some staff support so they're, so that they're dealing within the bounds of rationality and say, okay, come back when you have a solution that you're all happy to, with. And if you can't, then after a year, you know, the staff support goes away. But, you know, it's kind of, okay, if you, if you all can work together and resolve this, we'll do what you recommend. We're not in the business of, you know, picking sides in political fights. And so, I mean, I, I think that that sort of way to do air traffic control would help them a lot. The people who will be unhappy with that are the people who want to go and spend three minutes being on TV every week. But I don't know that anybody really cares about making those people happy.
Okay. Let's, um, let's kind of wrap things up
Sure.
Some things in the, in the city that you, that you experienced. Because I, I understand you, you own some properties here. You have some restaurants here. Tell me a little bit about your experiences and, and some things that you're feeling either positive or, or negative as far as, as maybe, I know personally, the restaurant industry, you know, it's a little tough out there right now.
No, I mean, it is. You know, I think that, you know, development services has been working better recently. I, I would say the, you know, I, I help a lot of tenants get their businesses started and get permitted. I would say the, the senior level staff there is very easy to work with and is very understanding of the realities of what small business owners go through and what they have the capability to pay for and what they don't have the capability to pay for. I would say, you know, the, the consistent struggle there is making sure that the staff that they have out interfacing directly with the public is well-trained. And also having customers understand that if something seems really weird to them, they can move up the chain. You know, that's one of the concerns I have is like, you know, is like, I know all of them, I know what the code is, I know when somebody's doing something wrong. But it shouldn't be a system that just benefits those who know. There should be, you know, checks in place to make sure that, you know, the little guy who's coming in, who doesn't have anybody to help them, understands when something got told to them wrong or not. And if they have a question, where they can go. I'm happy that it looks like they're moving down the road on water, on getting more supply. I'm concerned that we waited too long to do it. And that this community is going to suffer a lot. I'm very concerned about the behavior I see where a lot of people are basically saying, well, it's somebody else's job to conserve water, it's not my job to do it. And I think if we have a me-centric approach to that and there isn't, and there isn't broad community buy-in, we're going to be in a lot of trouble in a lot of different ways. And it's going to hurt a lot of people who, you know, don't need to be hurt. And I think that different people think that this is a game that can be won rather than if we don't sort it out and get something done, it's going to hurt everybody. You know, everybody loses. You know, there's no, there's no winner in us running out of water and being in severe restrictions and, you know, having to ration people just so we can make sure that hospitals have enough water to take care of people who get in car wrecks. You know, that, that's a terrible place to be and it'll hurt the community for a very long period of time. And so, I mean, I, I, I hope people take that issue very seriously because it, it really is. You know, I mean, I, we think the restaurant business is bad, but what's the restaurant business where, you know, you can only use 2,000 or 3,000 gallons of water a day? You know, where you have to limit, okay, I'm, I'm all on paper plates because I don't have the water to wash plates. Or, you know, I can't cook this because that uses too much water. I don't think, we're not used to thinking like that, but that is a possibility that we could be and if we keep kind of spinning our wheels on that issue. So.
Awesome. Well, thank you for coming on today and being our.
I, I appreciate being the inaugural guest.
You actually read my motto there, inaugural guest. Wow, that's amazing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
When asked if David would consider running for a city council again, he replied, when his kids are older. We've definitely not seen the last of David Lu. Thank you again for joining us on Community Chat.